All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, May 4, 2023 Planning Board Meeting.
It's in my car.
Where we're live now? So first thing is, is site walk postponed. Major subdivision Worcester Road, R 3217-E, R 2 Zone postponed. There was an issue with sending out the letters. And should we just move it to the next meeting? Not the next meeting. The next meeting would still be a little too short of time. So if we could move it to June 1st, if that works for you guys. I know Jerry said you're not going to be available that day, but.
Yeah, we can.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we move the site walk and public hearing to June 1st.
I think 1st. I'll second that motion.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Okay, here we go. June 1st. I'll just put that in. All right, and now if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, so introduction to board members. On the far left, we have Paul Amatucci, Jerry Graybill, Don Ganarelli, and myself, Michael Aru. There's no public hearings today. We have, we'll open the first public comment for non-agenda items. I just want to reiterate that this also means that it's for people that aren't on the agenda. So there's still, like, there's another thing that's on our agenda, just not on this one today, that when it's in process, we can't speak of them because they're not here to talk about like themselves. But for non-agenda items, if you have anything to say, you're more than welcome to come
Hello, I'm Pat Boubair. I live on Sixth Country Lane. I was just coming to see how the proposal for the performance standards for gas stations and convenience stores and that kind of thing were coming. The board have any report on that?
I have talked to James about that. I mean, would you mind coming up and saying?
James Wissmo, Town Manager. Yeah, we talked with S and P D C a few weeks ago. Mijay's working on it. S and P D C is working on it. So that was, so they have pretty much passed them the baton to develop the ordinances.
Passed it to Mijay?
Yep.
Or his office at least.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, and then are we in any kind of a timeline where we can expect to see some more progress or?
I would imagine the next couple of meetings, I can definitely check in and just see what the progress is and have an update for you.
Okay, that would be good. Yeah, because I was thinking that if it would be better to put this on the agenda as, you know, something to check in each planning board meeting, or I don't know what the best plan is, or just to keep coming in on the public comment?
Yeah.
Just come in on the public comment?
Yep.
Okay, good. All right.
Yeah, I think, Pat, if there is no project that's proposed to come in front of the board, it should just be a public comment.
Okay, good. All right. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Rick Raines, 18 Carolyn Drive in Burwick. First of all, thank you guys for what you do on the planning board. I know it's volunteer. You don't get paid much or anything at all. I do understand the recommendation not to talk about projects that are in process. I would make a recommendation as a procedural note that in order, and maybe you do this and maybe you don't, but in order for us as a citizen to know what is in process and cannot be discussed during a public comment, is that something that can be listed on an agenda so that people know what they can't talk about? Like, we don't necessarily know all the projects that are in process. I know of a couple because I've been to some meetings, but we don't know all the projects that you have going on that are kind of, can only be talked about when they're here. So how do we find out what the projects are if they're not listed anywhere?
They're on the agenda. The projects that we're talking about for this meeting are listed on the agenda.
Correct.
And next to public comments, it says for non-agenda items.
Correct.
So you can't talk about those.
Correct.
Anything that we have talked about in any previous.
Yes.
At any previous meeting would be covered by.
No.
No.
No, Paul, they cannot speak about any ongoing project.
No, will be covered by that exemption that you can't talk about.
They're still on there.
So I guess my question then is, do you want citizens to go back and look through as many previous planning board meetings to find out what the projects are?
Well, I mean, if you're, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're coming in here to speak about a specific project that's been presented before, then you already know that it's been presented and you know it's basically considered an agenda item. If you're coming in here, like, like Mr. Chair said, the beginning, the non-agenda items is for townwide kind of general comments about what you see going on in town, that kind of thing. But to speak to a specific project, you would obviously know that that project exists. You would know that that project exists because it was before the planning board already, which means you know that that's considered an agenda item.
Okay.
So there's no realistic way for us to list all of the ongoing projects that we can't discuss without developers here.
Right.
On the agenda, because the agenda would be pages long, because you're talking even projects going back that were proposed two or three years ago that are being revisited would have to be listed.
Okay.
So.
But, so when the public hearing that we're going to discuss about the particular subdivision that you're talking about comes back open, it will be on the agenda, correct?
Well, the public hearing's closed now.
Oh, I thought it wasn't closed.
No, they closed the public hearing.
It was closed the last, last time.
I thought it was open.
No.
Can public hearings be reopened?
Yeah.
Okay. How does a request for that happen?
Hannah, do you have the answer to that?
If I can find my unmute button. I would say it would be at the board's decision to decide to have a second public hearing or additional. In this case, it would be second public hearing, and you would just make that decision and send out notices for the meeting that it's going to be at to reopen it there.
Okay.
So I have multiple questions regarding that project that I will not ask.
If you have questions, you can ask, you can give them to Irish.
Okay.
Right? Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
And she can.
I can facilitate conversation with the developer.
Yep.
Outside of a public hearing?
I can send them your questions, and they can choose to address them at their next presentation.
Okay, and then it'll be up to the board if they decide to open.
And it will be up to the developer if he decides to address it. I believe that's the way we handle it, right, Hannah?
Yes, I mean, if he chooses to, or he or she chooses to address it beforehand, or in writing or whatnot, if you submitted comments ahead of time in the public hearing, I would hope that if a question was presented, the developer would address it in some way, shape, or form. But.
They're referring. They're referring to, they're referring to a project where the public hearing's already been closed, but they have additional questions, so it's okay for me to still facilitate that, right, direct it to.
Yes, we can, we can receive comments and submit them to the developer, yes.
Thank you.
In hopes that they will answer. And if they don't answer, my questions go unanswered because there's no public hearing.
Well, I would suggest.
Yes.
As a comment here, that when you send those comments in, that you also send them to every member of the planning board as well.
Okay.
So we see what those questions are.
Fair enough.
So we could always ask them.
Can do.
And I can, I can always forward whatever I receive from the public.
That'd be great.
To you guys, copy you guys, as well as the developer.
Yeah, we'll throw a wide net of questions.
That way the developer knows that the questions were asked and that the board is aware the questions were asked.
Perfect. Another procedural question. When the board gets reports from agencies on projects, are those reports available to the public to see?
Yeah.
And how do we go about requesting copies of those reports?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at James right behind you.
Depending on the thickness of the report, we may have to charge you for making copies, but they're always available in the planning office for you to come sit and review.
Okay.
And you can bring your cell phone and snippity snap pictures of areas that you want to take a look at engine to.
Will do. Well, that will, that'll probably stop me right there so that we don't get into trouble.
Okay.
Agreed?
Agreed.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
What's your last name?
It's Raines, R A Y N E S. Carrie Hilliard, 11 Alley Pond Road. I am requesting that that public hearing be reopened. I don't know if this is a second request, since I kind of took his as a request. I actually feel kind of highly offended. I was at the meeting on the 6th of April, and, you know, things were discussed. After the meeting, I approached one of the board members along with Ms. Karen Mullane, questioning the fact that both of us were not going to be able to attend the next meeting. It was told to us that our concerns were heard, and that some procedures were going to be followed. I was at work. I was not able to attend that public meeting. Karen was out of town. She was not able to attend that public meeting. I was rather disgusted as to how some of the things were handled. I feel kind of bamboozled that I was lied to and told what was going to happen, and that at the next public meeting, no decisions were going to be made. Those decisions were made, and the public hearing was then closed. Not being able to voice our concerns because we were told that something else was going to happen, which was never followed through. And I would like the public hearing opened again, because I feel like we were never able to be completely heard on our concerns. And as a citizen and as a taxpayer, I believe that is your responsibility to listen to us and to hear our concerns, and for us not to be directly lied to as to what was going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
I'll reply to that. I did talk with you that night, and I did talk with James after that. And then I also remember saying that the public hearing was going to be closed the next meeting. So that's the way I remember it.
That was not what happened.
Well, we can vote on that, but is there any other public comment? No? All right.
Make a motion we approve the minutes as written?
Second. Okay, further discussion? All in favor? All right, no old business today, so moving on to new business, site plan amendment, 106 Route 236, R 5732, RCI Zone, Burwick Iron and Metal.
I'm assuming I can do my presentation correctly?
Yes.
My name's Jay Stevens. I'm a civil consultant, and I've been working on the projects at the Burwick Iron and Metal Facility, you know, the recycling down here on Route 236, right next to the town.
Transfer station.
The transfer station, right. We can transfer different stuff. And I'm here with Mr. Brenna, who's the owner of Burwick Iron and Metal. And basically, as for those of you who are, may or may not be familiar with it, the entrance is off Route 236. You come in, and it's basically a metal recycling. There's a scale right off the edge of the side of the roadway. They come in, they weigh the material going in. It's then put into different piles to be recycled as aluminum or copper or whatever it happens to be. And then they come back out and off they go. The shredder that everyone's familiar with is sitting back in here. And when it was originally put in, everyone was worried it was going to run almost 24 hours a day. At least that was the impression that everybody had. And it probably did run five days a week for quite a while, because at that point, there was a pretty good backlog of material that needed to be consolidated and removed. That was many years ago. Project started in 2005. And I think it must have been 2013, everything was really going through.
Yeah, we started, we got, and we won in the Supreme Court, I think, in 2012.
Right, so 2013 is when the shredder actually went in. And actually, since that date, we haven't had any complaints, or at least there's none that I'm aware of, that the town's ever had on file for any violations of anything. The state comes in there through the solid waste offices, and they check it multiple times a year. We have all kinds of annual reports to different things. Everything's going along great, to the extent that they have to keep records for incredible lengths of time to verify all the stuff that's been going on. And right now, everything is done in a little bitty building right here, or specifically, little bitty building right next to the scale house. There are two young ladies that work there, renting the scales, answering the phones, taking care of management of paperwork, and.
Will he use a podium? I can't hear him.
Oh, I'm sorry. So what we would like to do, or what the management would like to do, is they'd like to replace this small building that's smaller than about half of this room with a building that makes sense. And also, they'd like to put in a restroom into that building, so the people who work there don't have to go out in the middle of the winter, cross the active driveway to the scale, and get into the facilities that are currently in this second building. So the whole effort of this project is to replace this little bitty tiny building with a slightly bigger building, the same width as the original footprint, lined up, centered on the scale, and then big enough to hold all kinds of records. We provided in your packets some sketches that the owner put together for a two-story building that would include, on the first floor, all of the lobby entrance where people come in, they, you know, take care of the records for, you know, what's being dropped off, what's being swapped out, creating an area for the permanent record storage, and then just space for those types of activities that occur in there when the personnel come in, and they have to have safety briefings and things like that. And then moving the current office space to the second floor, where they would have the offices for the president of the company, the business management, and so forth. And literally, that's all they're doing, is replacing that building and adding a restroom at that location. Now, what we did do is, the existing facility has a septic field out behind it, and we got ahold of the people who did the original design for the septic many, many years ago. They came out, reevaluated everything, and based on the number of personnel that have worked there over the years, nothing has to be done to change the septic field. All we're doing is adding a new source for the material coming into the septic tank. And so in this new scheme, there will be a little pump station outside this new building, and literally, everything will be pumped out to the septic field that's currently out there in service. The current field is probably three times as big as it needs to be for the current load, the current staffing, and so forth, so literally, there's, there's no change to anything else. And the only thing they're doing is replacing this small outdated building with a larger, more reasonable structure with a little restroom inside. That's what the whole project is. Like I say, we've got the HHE 200 redone, recertified, and a letter from the designer saying that everything is fine. I'm doing the work on the pump station, as you know, as a licensed engineer in the state of Maine, to get it from the new building out to where it will tie into that septic field. And we're actually doing a little extra, we're putting in a septic tank at this building, at the new building, so it's strictly effluent, this going out to the field. None of the solids and everything will be treated like a regular septic tank back at the new building. You won't really be able to see the building, because you can't see the building from the road now. If you go out there and the actual gate is open, and the gate is out here, if that gate is actually open, and you sit just correctly, you might be able to see through and see the building. But if you hit it just right, by the time you look, you're already past it, you can't see it. All, everything from this area is all obstructed by the precast concrete operation that's sitting out here in the front, so you can't see the building. The area where the building's going was all blasted ledge. It was blasted for the original building. It's the same ledge that was out there before. There's no change in stormwater. Nothing's changing in where the water's going. Everything literally is the same as it was. We feel that's a minor change, or about as minor as you can do. We're, again, we are not increasing the number of people at the facility. We're not changing the operations. We're just making it more reasonable for the administrative side to keep up with the paperwork and take care of the people that are in that building.
Yeah, we're, so we're going to want a demolition.
Excuse me, if you're going to talk, you got to come up and speak in the mic.
The people at home can't hear you.
Yeah, so we'd also need a demolition permit, because what we'd want to do is, we'll put an office trailer on the other side of the scale, demo the building that's there, and build it right in the exact same location. So that's how we'd like to do it if we could.
And is there any additional blasting needed?
Nope.
For the ledge?
Nope. When we did it, because the building that's there has a four-foot frost wall, and it's, the whole thing's blasted all the way, the whole entire yard.
Okay.
When we did it originally, you know, there was ledge outcrops everywhere, so we had to blast the whole thing.
Okay.
So you can dig it down anywhere you want.
And this, the purposes of this building is purely administrative? There is no operational activities going on there?
Nope.
Meaning with the scrap metal and.
No, no, it's strictly an office building, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
What will occur is, they do have to do required training on spill control training, like most companies do. This will actually give them a spot that isn't in the middle of another operation where they can do that type of thing. So it just makes it operationally better than all the other. And that's literally all it's, oh, this, tearing down one building, putting the new one back over the top of it.
Irish, do you have anything?
No, we're just looking to see, to find the application complete today. I have zero concerns about what he's requested. I've spoken with him at length previously about, you know, the application process and such, so.
Based on that, I would make a motion that we find the application complete. Second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
What we would obviously like to do is, after you find it complete, is to say it's okay to now get a permit, because part of what we've done for the sewer side of it is, that's a long haul, because of the ledge, we haven't peeled it off yet. If it has to be shallow, we have to order an insulated pipe, and that's, actually has a pretty good lead time on it. So we don't dare order it until we know we've got approval to actually do the work.
I don't know that we can approve it all in one, because we do need to set, schedule a site walk and.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. So I don't know that we can grant that. Hannah? We can't, we can't.
I would say that the board should still have a public hearing. The ordinance does not require a site walk for site plans, so it's kind of up to the board's discretion as to whether or not they wish to hold one for this type of application. But even so, I would suggest still discussing, holding a public hearing, and the approval if nothing changes at the next, the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so.
We need a site walk, right?
You don't think so?
Yeah.
I mean, it's just a small update to a building.
Yeah, I don't see a need for a site walk.
Okay. As a public hearing, I think we should still have it, just to voice any public concerns, if there is any, so. For that.
Mr. Chair, James and I are both working tomorrow, so we can get a butters notices out as soon as needed.
So that could also be for June 1st?
I believe so.
Is it June 1st?
Yeah.
Okay, so June 1st, and then we would just have to set the first one for 4 o'clock, and then this one for 5:00?
Okay, so 4:00. But you're not doing a site walk?
No, we're not doing a site walk.
No, sorry, just, yeah, sorry.
So now you've done, messed me up. First one is still at 5:00, then?
Yeah, still at 5:00.
Well, subject to change, depending on the rest of the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, so basically, for my, for my notes purposes, no site walk, public hearing June 1st, and at that point, then we could potentially give them the okay to get their permits.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right, next to new business is site plan review, stormwater, road improvements, and public recreational area, Sawmill Hill and Molton Street, U 174, R 1 and RP Zone,
Hi, good evening. I am Mike Zarba, representing SLR International Corporation, and on behalf of the Town of Maybe you've all had a chance to look at the plans, maybe not. We can, we can go through basically the, the concept, but if you're familiar certainly with the Molton Street area, and this particular parcel, the town acquired it some years back, and has been looking to redevelop it, well, I shouldn't say redevelop, really, to establish a recreational, passive recreational activity parcel there, and along with that activity, they're, they're looking to redo Molton Street, and parts of First and Second, heading up the hill, and I believe Copeland, up at the end. All of that water drains currently to an existing 18-inch outfall pipe that exists on this particular parcel that we're talking about. And as part of the improvements of Molton Street, the town asked, obviously, that we improve the out. improve the outfall structure itself, which is an MS4 structure, outfall number 007, of course, hence the title of the project. But do it in compliance with the vision of having a park-like recreational activity, again, passive recreational activity out there throughout the year. So we've designed some stormwater features for the site that hopefully comply with that, have allowed some, you know, pathways to eventually be installed to access the river area and other parts of the site that we're not really involved in at this particular point. But I think there's a master plan for that site overall as to how the green spaces and the pathways and a variety of other, you know, the passive recreational activities might occur on there. So we've tried to do, you know, like I said, the plan in compliance with that, you know, forethought, you know, so the town can eventually, like I said, get the rest of the landscaping and features that they need and want for the public's use of that site. Just to give you a concept on sheet number 12, we kind of have a blow-up portion of the endpoints of Samit Falls River is right down the bottom of the hill here. At the sharp curve, we have what it was, outfalls there is offsetting, and the improvements are kind of shown on the different, you know, some of these graphics, the layout plan in general. I believe we have a grading plan. Shows a little bit more of the site grading activities. The stormwater basin itself is a little bit more complex than just a standard detention basin. What you're seeing down here are what are called our tanks, which are underground storage tanks. But the underground storage tanks, in this case, allow the water to infiltrate through a sand filter system that's underneath those for treatment purposes. And really, we're treating for water quality activities that are required so that when we discharge eventually the water back to Samit Falls River, it's been cleaned effectively from the pollutants, sediments, oils, grease, phosphorus, nitrogen-type activities that generally are picked up in stormwater flowing down roads. And so this is, like I said, a little bit more specialized type pond to address those issues for the, you know, DEP requirements and for your MS4 requirements as well, so that you're discharging clean stormwater back to, you know, back to the river.
Is that what's going in the 1,000-gallon tank that's proposed on here?
The 1,000-gallon tank?
Yes.
The 1,000-gallon tank is actually a, it's a pretreatment sediment facility that's... So what we try to do is get as much of the sediments, the larger sediments out first, and through that tank system, that's where those would actually settle out. The water then would go through the piping system here into these storage tanks, filter through that sand filter system, and then eventually get discharged out to this outfall structure over here, is what's being shown. So yeah, typically, you want to get as much of that bigger, like I said, larger gritty type sediment out so it doesn't clog the sand filters or the storage tanks themselves.
Awesome. Thank you.
And I believe we also have the two landscaping sheets on there are showing what the roadside landscaping would be on sheet number one. This is Molton Street and added parking area and sidewalk. That's being added to that area of the street from Sawmill Road to the corner. And then the second sheet is really the landscaping that's shown around the whole detention pond to, again, screen a good majority of it from, you know, the passerbys or the walkers that might be out in this site eventually. You know, it's kind of supposed to kind of hide, you know, a good majority of that, although the slopes, you know, are, you can see are, you know, fairly steep at some points, but you think, you know, certainly with landscaping and once, you know, that matures, that, you know, will be screened nicely, you know, as a passive recreational area.
Should someone see that, would that be offensive in some way, the quality of the water that's sitting in that pond?
Um, no, I don't believe, actually, there won't be standing water in the pond itself, other than during an actual rainstorm. There will be storage in the pond, but it will drain within 48 hours. So you won't see standing water in there, but yeah, they're just not necessarily the most likely when you see this kind of hole in the ground. So I think to the degree we can try to screen it from that and make it more of a...
Okay, so we'll be seeing the empty hole.
A landscaped look, you know, more like a parklet, you know, would look as opposed to a, an industrial, let's call it, you know, water treatment, stormwater treatment facility.
Is there a useful life of the sand filter system?
They, as long as they're properly maintained, and part of the requirement of putting in a system like this is it's going to need to be, you know, maintained within the manufacturer's recommendations. There's a procedure for that. It's all listed on here and in the plan sheet. So the town's going to obviously have to take on, you know, that maintenance responsibility.
Okay.
You know, in the future, typically, it's back flushing, it's inspecting it, you know, annually or after, you know, maybe particular types of storms or heavy storm events, making sure that the pretreatment tank that you asked about, you know, is pumped, you know, when it's supposed to be so that we don't allow those sediments to get into the, you know, into the system. So other than that, you know, they're actually plastic, believe it or not, plastic crates, high-density polyethylene crates. So effectively, the crates should last, as long as you maintain it properly, they should last that long. And the sand filter itself should the same way, as long as it's maintained properly. And like I said, it can be back flushed, so it shouldn't degrade. It's very much like a septic system. I mean, it eventually might fail, so I would expect its life expectancy is, you know, the same 40, 50, 60 years, but it largely depends on proper maintenance as well.
Thank you.
Question, you said the slope of this, is quite steep?
Yes.
Would it be a hazard to kids playing in the area or anything like that?
I think with the landscaping that's shown around there, that's not really a place that they should be accessing very easily. I think you'd best see it on here.
Right.
We had to do some kind of intricate grading to make sure that we had enough depth for these, or we just talked about the sand filter and the crates that sit inside there to store water. Those take up a certain amount of depth that we have, you know, have to go down and to create enough elevation for us to get a discharge point on the existing site. We can't, you know, part of this whole thing is we really can't be discharging this directly at the river's edge, which are where the grades would have gone to had we done that. So we built up the stormwater pond a little bit from what it was, and that's why you see the steep grade coming down. But what we really steepened the grade up for was to avoid impacting the 75-foot protection zone from the river. And really, there's a, in addition to the 75-foot setback, it's from the top of a slope of less than 20%. And unfortunately, we had some 20% slopes adjacent to the river right there, and so we had to, you know, squeeze this up as high on the hillside as we could. And it, you know, required us to kind of steepen up this embankment a little bit from what exists there now. But I wouldn't expect that that's not the location where people are going to be playing around on. Again, the landscaping is going to prevent a lot of that from being the occurrence as well.
How deep is it?
How deep is the pond itself?
Because a steep angle that only goes three feet versus a steep angle that goes 30 feet is two very, very different concepts.
The top of the berm is at 179. The bottom of the basin itself is at 176, 85.
Oh, so it's steep, but it's only a couple of feet.
It's the embankment, it's the downhill embankment from there that's steep.
Oh, okay.
I know, you probably can't see it over there, Irish, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I didn't bring up my copy of materials over, so...
It's this downhill slope here, that we have basically three-to-one slope, join back to grade before we hit that 75-foot setback line. So we need to match in the existing grades from the top of the line, which this line here is representing. All right?
Right, yeah.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Blind.
No, no.
So just saying the obvious question here, you don't see a need to fence this?
The entire basin itself?
Yes.
I do not, no.
Okay.
No.
And if needed, I would assume we can always petition the town manager to add a fence at the edge of the stream if needed. So do you guys have any other questions? Because we're looking for completeness on this application, too.
Yeah, but we have to discuss the waivers first.
Yeah.
So the first waiver is 9.8. F. 1. E., external plumbing permit or permission letter to enter municipal water and sewer lines or onsite soil investigation report by licensed site evaluator. The second one is 9.8. F. 2. B. 1. Perimeter survey of parcel be certified by land surveyor. And then the third one is 9.8. F. 2. B. 4. IV. Onsite soils investigation. So Hannah, would you mind giving a brief description of these?
Yes, I'm pulling up my report now, but the, and I'm not going to read them because I don't remember the numbers that you just gave, but the first and the last waiver that you just mentioned are essentially of the same item. The first one is it listed in the conditional use section of the ordinance, and the second one is it listed in the site plan section of the ordinance. And the site plan section of the ordinance requires all of those submission requirements plus the conditional use ones, so it's double-dipping there. So if you would vote to waive it, you'd be waiving both, although they are the same item technically, pretty much. And that one is really if you're going to be connecting to public sewer for a bathroom, which is not what they're doing here, so that's the ask for the waiver there. They didn't do the study because there is no bathroom to connect to. And then, I don't recall what the other one was.
The perimeter survey of parcel by certified land surveyor?
Yes, that one, I actually wanted to ask the applicant why that was not included and if there's reasoning for that waiver.
Sure, I'd be, we, so we had the property surveyed by Owen Haskell, but substantially, it's a linear roadway project that we had Owen Haskell perform a topography survey, you know, for the entirety of Molton Street, like I said, all the way up the hill to Copeland. They also surveyed a portion of this lot that we're talking about tonight, but one, it extends well beyond the area that we needed surveyed, and the town owned the parcel, so we didn't see frankly the need. And to do the design that we were talking about doing, we didn't need to do that. And of course, I think we were trying to keep costs down for the town to not do a perimeter survey that didn't need to be done. We, I gather that the town has that perimeter survey probably from purchasing the lot. I can't speak to that, I don't know we ever necessarily investigated that, but, you know, we didn't need it for the purposes of this particular project. You know, there's no structures, facilities, or anything else going on the site that would need, say, setback requirements or anything like that. So I think identifying those specifically for our purposes wasn't, you know, the exact scope of our project.
Makes sense to me. So, looks like in my memo, I recommended the two soils report-related memos and just completely didn't mention the other one. But based on that explanation, I would also recommend the waiver for that one as well, the land survey.
All right, thank you.
I would make a motion that we approve all three waivers as applied for. I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Okay, next is completeness.
Are there any state or environmental issues that have not been addressed, that need to be addressed here, or are we fine with all those approvals?
Is that my question? Irish, go.
Oh, I was gonna say, I think, I think we're good. Do you see anything that was missing, Hannah?
As far as what has been submitted, I did not see anything missing. I did note in the memo that we have sent the plans to Kristy Urbaska, who I'm assuming the board is rather familiar with, to review since it is an MS4 project. She's reviewing that for MS4 permit compliance and doing the technical review there. So if there's anything that comes up with that, obviously, that'll be submitted to the board. But as far as applications, submittals, there wasn't anything missing there.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we find this applicant complete. Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, next would be scheduling the site walk and public hearing. Seeing how there was not a site walk for the last one, would we want to do that for the June 1st? No, that one got postponed. We're doing that one, but the...
The metals.
We're not doing a site walk on that. So would we do the site walk on June 1st? Is that going to be enough time?
Yeah, I think we can push both of those.
Doesn't matter if you do 4:00 or 5:00 for the site walks.
Can you do 4:00 and 5:00?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we'll have to do, is move the...
Do you want to do...
The scrap metal at 4:00.
You mean Worcester Road?
Yeah, Worcester.
Worcester Road at 4:00.
Sorry, it's just confusing.
I know.
Worcester Road at 4:00.
And then we'll do the park at 5:00?
Yep.
On June 1st.
No, that's coming up next.
It says closer to here and Duncan Donuts before the meeting.
Now, that would make, what, three public hearings for that day? Is that going to be too much, or are we going to try and schedule that one the next meeting?
What's the third that you have for that day?
We'll have...
The first one is Worcester Road. The second one is the...
Burwick Iron and Metal.
Yeah, Burwick Iron and Metal, and then this one would be the third one.
I mean, I think, I think you probably could push this one to the 15th.
Okay.
And just space it all a bit.
Okay.
It'll work.
Okay, yeah, let's do the public hearing on the 15th for that.
Even, even just do the site walk on the 15th.
Yeah, that'd probably freshen our minds then.
Okay.
Okay.
Just so you don't have to do...
Two.
Just, just so you don't have to do two, two site walks and kind of cramming it in.
Site walk at 4 or 5? 5 o'clock?
5 o'clock.
All right. So are we moving Worcester Road back to 5?
Yes. Sorry.
I'm gonna need another page to write changes of times.
Or just a whiteboard?
Yeah.
So you can just...
Just keep, yeah.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Next is new business, solar extension request off Hubbard Road, R1, 7-4 AP Zone, Saltage.
Hi, I'm Olivia Crosby with WSP. I'm here for, um, on behalf of Saltage, Drew and Alex could not attend, so I'm here to present for them. Um, we are requesting a permit extension for the solar project, um, on Hubbard Road for an additional year, um, until the interconnection issues are resolved. I'm sure you're aware the CMP, um, is still working through all their interconnection, um, issues, so, and hopefully, you know, that'll be resolved shortly and we can continue on. Um, the project has already been permitted and approved through the planning board and has all, you know, required approvals, so this is just an extension request, um, for the permit approval.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, extend the permit for another year.
Okay, further discussion? Nope, all in favor? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next into new business, subdivision amendment, lot line adjustment, 15 and 17, Winding Brook Drive, R49, 11-3, and R49, 11-4, R2 Zone, Fitchett.
How do you know? Thanks, Phil Fitchett. Um, we're, we're looking at adjusting our property lines, um, our neighbor is currently in the process of selling her house. Um, I know it pushes us under the 150-foot road frontage that, that they say is required, but we are sitting on the end of a dead-end cul-de-sac. Like, there's, there's nothing you can do back there, like, there's no way to cut another road in, there's, there's nothing there. And if you look at the lots, like, the reason initially there was going to be another house back there, so our lot is a little bit bigger, so when you see that weird corner that kind of juts into the side of our yard, there was going to be an easement and a right-of-way to put our house further back, and it failed the perk test back there, so it was, it's a non-buildable lot anyway. Um, so what we're looking at doing is knocking off that corner, you know, part of our front yard is actually in her front yard, which is almost pointless, and in that corner that, that juts out into the side of our yard is literally 15 to 20 feet off of our septic system and our leach field. So if we could have made these adjustments, then it allows us really to open up and clean that up on the side and, and get those trees and all those roots and all that crazy stuff that's really encroaching on our leach fields, and, and opening up the sidelines of the yard and the sidelines, giving her back the front yard, you know?
So what, what is the final, uh, frontage then after this?
We would end up, I think, at 112.19 versus 150. And when they, when they did the development, the neighbor to the left of us, if you look at his lot, his lot is sitting at around 55 to 60 feet. Um, there is an easement there that goes, it's public access to a little pond that's there, but I want to say his road frontage is only like 60 feet. You know, I mean, I understand 150 foot on a main road, but back there, I mean, you, you know, there's nowhere else to go, you know? You're gonna stop when you hit the house, so, you know, you can't cut another road in, you know, even if you wanted to realistically.
Irish, you have anything?
Um, I do, I actually, uh, the neighbor who owns the parcel who, that has the little jut into their yard was not able to attend, so she sent me an email. Um, she said, "Good evening, Ms. Griffith, Christine and Boo Fitchett gave me your email address and asked me to write a letter in regards to new property lines that separate my property from theirs. I am completely in agreement with the Fitchettes when it comes to rezoning the lines for our properties. We have been wanting to do this for some time now, we are hoping to have it approved before I sign the house over to the new buyers." And then she says if we need anything else from her, to let her know, and that is from Bernice Condon slash Worley.
The, the house is currently under contract, um, and we were trying to kind of get it all done before that, just, you know, because it starts the process all over again. Um, square footage for square footage, you know, we, we're not looking at taking any of the yard, you know, because then it pushes, you know, her yard under square, you know, the minimum square footage for the area. Um, it does affect the road frontage, but again, road frontage on the end of a dead-end road, you know, and, and allowing us to really clean up and get the trees away from our leach field and everything else is just beneficial all the way around, really.
Hannah, do you have anything else to add?
Um, the only thing that I will add is that, um, the, our applicant is correct that the required frontage is 150 feet, and the ordinance actually permits their frontage to be reduced by 20% to 120 feet, uh, because of its location on the cul-de-sac. Um, so their, their request for the 112 is even less of a, what's the word?
Less action than it seems.
Yeah, um, than, than it seems, yeah. But other than that, uh, it seems very minor and makes great sense to me. I don't, I don't know why it was drawn like that to begin with, but...
It was because the other lot, if you stood in the yard, you would look at it and go, "What are you doing?" Like, our, you know, our lawn chair would be in her front yard and she'd be sitting in our backyard. It's just, so if we can switch those corners and adjust the triangles, it opens up their backyard a little bit and opens up the side of ours, that's all it does. It asks you to clean the corners up and straighten the lines out.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve the waiver.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Who seconded that?
Don did.
Don?
Don did. Malfi. Whisper.
And Hannah, we don't need to do a, uh, public hearing for this because it doesn't impact any other properties, right?
If the board really wanted to, it could, but they do not have to.
No.
So one and done, permanently the Fitchettes are good?
I think they're, they're good now, right? There's nothing else that we need to do for voting?
You need to approve the amendment.
Okay.
Other than that, that's fine. Minor detail.
No, we just granted the waiver, now it's...
I move that we approve the amendment.
Okay. Okay, further discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you. All right, moving along, public comment for non-agenda items, second one.
Hello, Karen Mullane, 47 Alley Pond Road. Um, just procedural question regarding public comment, public hearing, when you can speak about agenda, non-agenda items. I understand that some topics are off limits because they are in process. If they were on the agenda today, they would still be off limits because there's not a public hearing. If I have a concern, um, I streamed the last meeting, I could not attend, and I have a serious concern about some misinformation, when or how do I address that?
Um, James, could you answer that?
I think one of the best things to do is you could email Irish, myself, and Hannah, and we can...
Okay.
Track down, I'm happy to talk with your concerns and procedures.
Okay, so via email is probably the best way?
Yes.
Okay, and if a public hearing were to be reopened?
So procedurally, um, with the final, when the final plan comes in, they, the board can decide to hold a public hearing on the final plan. So when that comes in, which I believe will be in the next meeting or two, and they've submitted their final plan, so they can decide to hold a final plan, public hearing.
That would be wonderful. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, moving along, is informational items.
Hannah, they always look at me. Um, so, so, um, James, why'd you click TBD on these? Am I supposed to bring them up to them?
No, no, no.
Okay.
No.
So do we have anything informational?
No.
I would just make a reminder of the meeting with North Berwick next week.
Yes, don't forget, we need to make a quorum at North Berwick.
What day?
The, when, Wednesday?
The 11th. I don't know if that's Wednesday or Thursday, but it's the 11th.
That's, that's...
Thursday.
Send that email.
That's June.
I believe it's Thursday.
It is Thursday.
It's Thursday, yeah.
Time?
I think they start at 11:30?
6:30.
6:30?
Yeah.
I haven't been to one of their meetings in a while, but...
6:30.
And Lejay will be there, um, 4:00 from our office for that project.
Mike, I have a question.
Okay.
I have a question, question from last night, I know we can't talk about what went on, but I have a question about the people who were in Berwick. They did not show up to that meeting last night.
They were the only...
But what I'm saying is, they're, allowing them to express their concerns was not, they did not do it at South Berwick. I'm just wondering, since they're all from Berwick...
A butter's notices were sent for the site walk and, uh, and the meeting.
Right, they were there at the site walk, but they did not come in.
Then that was a, a choice they made, because there was no comments sent to me, or I would have gone to the meeting. Um, so they...
Then that...
Yeah, no, they, but the only, um, a butter's to the other town projects that we have going right now are just, um, literally on that street, except for one across the street that followed in the right, within the footage, so...
I guess the question I have is, since that park portion is in Berwick...
Everything still happens for our projects, procedurally speaking, for our projects with, with South Berwick, those all happen in South Berwick. For our projects in North Berwick, they're all going to happen in North Berwick.
So all of our discussions have to be at the South Berwick meeting, is where I'm going with that.
Yes, yes. All of our discussions for the South project, projects would be there.
Well, we can request them to come in for a meeting.
I was mistaken about that. What we can request is for us to have an extra meeting there or bring an extra meeting, have them bring an extra meeting, or have them come to a meeting that they have scheduled that we can attend, that might be sooner than what they originally anticipated.
Okay.
That was my, my bad.
Yeah, any meetings revolve, or involving a project that crosses town boundaries, uh, have to be joint meetings between the two boards, and since the, uh, active application is with South Berwick, um, they really should be held by South Berwick.
And same when we switch to North Berwick, because that's going to be submitted as one project, not two separate, right?
Yeah, and the, the primary portion of the property is in North Berwick, so the active application will be there.
So ladies and gentlemen, more road trips. I'm the lady, you guys are the gentlemen, but more road trips.
So we'll be voting in South Berwick at that time, when the time comes?
Yes, and then for the other one, we'll...
Be in North Berwick for that one.
Yes, so it's very important, I guess that's my only informational item, is it's very important when we have these out-of-town meetings, I'll send the reminders if you guys can let me know for sure who, who's going to be there, because if we can't make a quorum, I have to see if we can have something pushed. So...
The 11th, I'll be there.
Okay, I'm holding you to it.
All right.
I know where you live.
I know you do.
I've met your wife, I'll never drag you.
He doesn't put you.
All right, next is the adjournment.
I move that we adjourn the meeting of the planning board, May 4th, 2023.
Okay, all in favor? All right, good night.